Calling the order, tonight, the June 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please rise and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Linel? Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther, absent. Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Sutel?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have seven out of eight councilmembers with us this evening. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris, to approve tonight's agenda. Any changes? I see none. All in favor of tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Tonight's agenda is approved. We have one card, um, this evening, for public comments, and that would be Ms. Fisher. If you would like to come forward. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Alright, um, I'm actually here talking about the 521 acres, um, which is going to be filled in, apparently with clean waste. Um, I was wondering, uh, the reason why we're doing this is to develop on the land, or what are we putting, uh, putting all that on already soil, which is supposedly supposed to be good and everything. Um, and it's also going to be on a floodplain. So, what is going to do to prevent it from just washing away? Because, well, obviously, if that's what you're doing, is trying to build it up. And also, if you're building it up, what lands around it will be affected by it. And can it only be used for clean fill, or in the future, can it be used for other kinds of fills? Which is coming from the airport. From an airport official, I was told that there are going to be three more waste sites in St. Louis County, for just the airport. So, um, so I wanted to make sure that that is not going to be able to be turned later on to a waste site. And then, on a floodplain, what are we going to do to keep the land there, instead of just washing away again, and spending money, again, doing it? Let's see. Uh, some things have changed because I've gotten some more notice about things. So, uh, is there going to be a wildlife, um, capture retrieval before this goes on? Are, has the EPA been notified about this? And I'm concerned on it being, uh, so close to Westlake, within miles, is it not? So, it being that close, and we have a fire that is out of control, that we can't do anything about it, do we want to be messing around with any acreage around Westlake? Especially if they have other chemicals and other toxins in them. I also would like to be apprised on the fact of where these three dump sites at the airport is going to be using, um, for...
Excuse me, Ms. Fisher, can you speak into the mic for me?
Um, yeah, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, so the three dump sites is a concern, and where they're going to be in St. Louis County. And then also, what is going to make it not wash away again? Are we going to put money into the levy? Are we, are we going to do that, or is somebody else going to do that? And then, it's going to be built on, but it's a floodplain. And I don't know why everybody says a hundred years. The asphalt plant, which I was opposed to, washed down the river. And they said they would evacuate and everything at a time. How would you do that? So, so my main concern is, can this be turned into a different waste site after, and then you're building on a floodplain? I know we don't have land to build more places, but we do have people which are not taking care of their property. And so, we need to find some way of reversing that. They either take care of it, or they lose it. And then, we could build on all those empty buildings that we have. And that's what Bridgeton really has a big problem with, is that we do have a lot of empty buildings we can use. But, we need to find land, and that's why this is being done. I obviously realize that. But it's on a floodplain. In a hundred years, floods are not a hundred years. They are all different times. So, you know, so, we've got to reevaluate our things that we're going to do for the future. Because, buying a problem, hoping nothing happens, you know, um, that's our future. That's our future children and our future legacy. And I don't want to be down in the books, um, that I cost one of these, or I let it go. So, I hope that you guys kind of understood everything.
Thank you.
Anybody could call me and ask where all this is coming from, because I've been in contact with the airport and lots of other officials. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have no further public comments. The next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris, to approve the Minutes from Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. Any changes? Deletions, additions? I see none. All in favor of the Minutes?
Roll call.
Roll call. Want to call the roll? Because he requested.
We don't have eight of us here, so that's why I said roll call.
Um, Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther? Oh, absent. Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Abstain.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, by a vote of six ayes and one abstention, the Minutes for Wednesday, June the 4th, are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be appointments. Councilmembers, I put in front of you this evening, the names of three individuals. I would like to ask for favorable approval for them to be appointed to the Park Board. Do you want to do all three at once, or individually? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve all three is submitted.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Patel, to approve all three of the nominees for the Park Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The three Park Board members are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be perfection of bills. Starting with Bill Number 6495. Councilmember Luke will be reading instead of Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion for second reading of Bill 6495.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Hood, for the second reading of Bill Number 6495. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, Application Number 25-PZ-03, to rezone approximately 521 acres of land located at 5137 Obuchon Road, 13897 and 14175 Ferguson Lane, and 13674, 13728, 13738, 13748, 13774, and 13812 Missouri Bottom Road, from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to M1 Manufacturing District Limited. Make a motion for Bill 6495 to become Ordinance Number...
25-20.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Hood, that Bill Number 6495 become Ordinance 25-20. Discussion. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I've had some follow-on discussion with Public Works Department about this, and I just have a couple lingering questions. With rezoning, should the council choose to rezone tonight? What specifically will the landowner be able to do with the property? Just with the rezoning alone, and not with the special use permit yet?
Mr. Graytons?
Yes, I'll try to answer that, and I'll ask it. Mr. Linnenbrocker, if I miss anything, if you wouldn't mind jumping in. So correctly stated, this is just simply a rezoning, not simply a rezoning request, but a rezoning request. What that would do is, if council approves it, anything in the M1 District, whether permitted by right or permitted by special use permit, those uses are now permitted. Anything with, that requires a special use permit, of course, would go through the process, Planning Commission and City Council, to address any potential impacts. And of course, City Council has the ability to approve conditions with a special use permit that would go with that particular land use. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have two follow-on questions as well. At what point in the process will the use of the roads for the fill trucks and the potential damage to them, and then also, the environmental impact of displacing 521 acres of water in a floodplain? At what point in the process will all of that be addressed, and how?
And you're referring to, um, the fact that the applicant had stated in their rezoning application, their intention to follow up with a special use permit for a fill site on a portion of this? Just to make sure. That was, that was mentioned at the last council meeting. Those are items that could be addressed through a special use permit, um, when it's evaluated. Missouri Bottom Road, which is the road fronting the southern portion of this property, that's a St. Louis County road, so they would be notified of, uh, any type of special use permit application. So that'd be something that St. Louis County could address through any comments. Anything that comes from that, City Council could, um, attach as a condition to a special use permit. And the same would be for, you know, stormwater concerns as well, can be addressed through a special use permit through conditions after it's analyzed by staff.
Councilmember Luke, um, the city attorney would like to add some to your first question.
Yeah, and really, I mean, it pertains to, to both questions, and I agree with everything that Mr. Grayton said. I mean, I, maybe just to, I think that there's a fair amount of focus at the moment, perhaps, on the fact, as Mr. Grayton said, that the applicant has suggested that they may, if this rezoning passes, seek, uh, may be interested in, in using the property that they own as a clean fill operation. This, there are several steps that would have to be satisfied if that were to occur. And this is the most general and the most preliminary of all the steps in the process. You know, right now, as I think everybody's aware, this property is zoned residential, R1. And so, what's in front of you tonight, and was forwarded from the Planning Commission, is to rezone from R1 to M1 Manufacturing District. And if you look at the manu, the M1, uh, ordinance, uh, there, there are somewhere around 70, uh, uses in the M1 District that are permitted by right, um, that include any bicycle manufacturing and artificial limb manufacturing. There are probably another, I'm going to say 40, um, uses that are permitted with a special use permit. And so, I would caution anybody from, from, uh, being too focused on what this applicant has said they may pursue in the future, because they could change their mind tomorrow and decide to open a artificial limb manufacturing facility. And that would have its own thresholds and hurdles. The next step, if this were going to be a clean fill operation, is they'd have to come before, uh, this council, first the Planning Commission, but then this council with an application for a special use permit. And at that point, you can study the particular uses and the way they say they're going to use that property, and you can place conditions upon how they operate, if you decide to issue the special use permit at all. And then, if you approve the special use permit that allows them to, to, uh, place a clean fill operation on the property, then they're going to have to apply for a site disturbance permit to actually move the soil, to put it on the, the property. And among the things that they're going to have to satisfy the city that they've achieved in the course of applying for that site disturbance permit, is they're going to have to, to demonstrate that they've received approval from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, from Metropolitan Sewer District, and from the Missouri Bottom Levy District. If this is within the Missouri Bottom Levy District? Yeah, so, so, there's a lot of steps between now and, um, a clean fill operation, opening on that property. This is, like I said, the first and the most general of all of those.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, finally, just as a general comment, um, excuse me, within the comprehensive plan updates that we're working on now, um, I hope that the city will consider looking at the big picture of this entire floodplain area, and maybe perhaps talking with all of the landowners out there, um, to make sure that the city is getting truly what we are hoping for and planning for in the comprehensive plan.
I would agree. That's, that's absolutely an appropriate subject for the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hood?
Yes, um, since Ms. Fisher is still here, this site has absolutely nothing to do with what's going on with the airport, or the transfer of any material from the airport. So, this is strictly a private venture by a developer to raise that specific area up out of the floodplain for development.
Okay. Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the area we're talking about is Ward 3, right? I believe it is.
Used to be Ward 1, back fifteen years ago.
Okay. I remember Mr. Fetch and I went out there and visited with the residents several years ago, uh, right there, uh, where the, uh, the fill operation is taking place. Councilmember Sutel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, as we look at this, it's, it's changing from R1 zoning, which R1 is like one acre lots. The last thing we're ever going to think about is building one acre housing lots out there in this floodplain area. It's illegal, they can't even do it with, you know, unless they're going to build them up on huge, huge stilts or something like that. So, uh, there was a few houses out there, the sod company, you know, it was a sod company, had their old farm, a couple farmhouses, uh, that I was their council member for a couple years. I know that's all kind of been gone now. So, there's no remaining homes on this here being R1 zoning anymore. Those are all, have all been taken down. I, I, I'm sure there's nothing left unless maybe back across the levy or something like that. But, you know, uh, we're gradually not seeing any construction, you know, on R1 lots, except maybe, the exception might be Smiley Road, anywhere in Bridgeton. So, this makes total sense to move it forward, you know, to M1 zoning, and with all the other development out in that direction. And we still didn't have the option to take a look and say, what are they going to build? They're going to change the zoning. I'd asked a question before. What about getting rid of all these crazy addresses and putting one address for the whole thing? You know, instead of having separate addresses. And he did mention that they might try to consolidate this, but they also may come back to us and say, okay, now we're ready for a subdivision plot for this thing. They might have some roads they're going to design in. If they're going to build, you know, uh, actually like an Earth City kind of complex there, they're going to actually probably have separate property owners, not just own everything in the, in the development. It's possible, but you never know. I'm, I'm for this, so, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Iwano?
Yes, can someone please clarify for me? So, there's no remaining homes on this tract of land. But, am I understanding, because it's a floodplain, that no homes can be built on this tract of land?
If somebody were to come and say, here's the plans for it, we would review them and decide one way or another. It's not like illegal or anything like that, but they have to hit certain criteria. Without plans in place, or for us to review, we can't, we can't make that statement.
Okay, so potentially, it could be used for a subdivision tract?
We would have to look at the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Before I recognize Councilmember Luke, I think there is one farm, farmhouse remaining there. I don't think it's occupied, but the building's still there. Councilmember Luke?
Yeah, I think, I would just like to add on to the previous conversation, and Mr. Grayton could confirm. I believe in the comprehensive plan, uh, that's being worked on right now. This entire area is planning to be industrial, manufacturing, or non-residential. Is that correct?
Sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
To clarify, um, the previous conversation, right now, it's zoned residential. But in the comprehensive plan that's being worked, this entire area is planning to be non-residential. Is that correct?
Correct. In the current 2013 comprehensive plan, it shows this area as industrial and/or utility under the future land use map.
Any further questions? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther? Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Thank you.
By a vote of seven to nothing, Bill Number 6495 becomes Ordinance 25-20. Next item on the agenda, second reading for Bill Number 6496, Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion for second reading of Bill 6496.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Norris, for a second reading of Bill Number 6496. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, approving an agreement for special legal council services from the law firm of Hamilton Weber LLC. I make a motion for Bill Number 6496 to become Ordinance Number 25-21. Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Norris, that Bill Number 6496 become Ordinance 25-21. Discussion. I see none, I hear none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwano?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to nothing, Bill Number 6496 becomes Ordinance 25-21. Next item on the agenda, we don't have any discussion items. The attorneys report.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council Communications, I will start with Councilmember Patel this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have one thing, and maybe this is directed to Mr. Bookout. I know a while back, we talked about mail delivery from the Bridgeton Post Office, um, being either delayed or just not getting delivered. So, I've had some residents that have called me about this, and also including, um, I've talked to somebody at Pattonville School District that had the same, uh, problem. So, I was wondering, is there an issue? Did, did we talk to somebody, or what's going on with that? Because that is a legitimate complaint that I have been hearing quite often from several different people.
If you want, we can wait till he gives his report. Okay.
Yep, but other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Iwano?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to Brendan and the team of the Rec Center for the 20th, uh, anniversary celebration this last Saturday for the Aqua Port. It was very nice, and I cannot believe it's been 20 years. The place looks phenomenal, and kudos to the maintenance and upkeep. So, thank you for that. And, um, I also wanted to give a shout out to the chief and the Police Department for their annual report. It was very well written, um, an interesting read, informative, uh, also with a lot of statistical data. And if you've not had an opportunity to read it, I would certainly encourage you to take a moment. You can find it on the website or the Police Department's Facebook page. And then, I just had one more thing, in case anyone's not aware. There's a recent scam going around that's being sent out in text messages. The text appears to be coming from the Missouri Department of Transportation, stating that you have a violation or penalty, that you're in default of payment, and that you must remit payment within X amount of time, or you potentially will lose your driving privileges, or even face prosecution. The, it is completely a scam, there's no legitimacy to it. Do not respond to it, simply delete it. And, um, Missouri Department of Transportation MoDOT even has a notice on their website advising people that they will not be reaching out and contacting anyone for any sort of payment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sutel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, briefly, I want to just talk about, I'm glad we're going to have our fireworks passes handed out tonight, because we've had quite a few phone calls this last week, so, uh, I'm looking forward to that as well. I also, I'm looking forward to next Wednesday, we're going to have a Ward 1 meeting in this room here, Councilman Westy and myself, and if some of the others want to attend and show up, that's, they're welcome as well. So, that's, you know, just, just putting that out. Hopefully, we get all of our passes delivered before that Wednesday, because otherwise, that's the only reason why they're showing up. So, alright, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Westy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, thanks, everybody, for coming out today. I appreciate it. I know there's probably other stuff you'd be preferring to do on a Wednesday night like this, but you're here, so thanks. Shout out to the Parks and Rec for the pool. I've been up there a couple times with my son so far this year, and, I'm excited to see that the big slide's going to be starting back up here pretty soon. I know they had to do some repair work on one of the motors for it, so, happy to see that's going to be back up and running. And that just comes along with having a pool that's 20-plus years old, so, um... I was able to, last week, come up and take a look at the, um, van that we have going around, or had going around, I should say, scanning the streets in Bridgeton. It was really cool to see, uh, more or less, what it is, is it uses LiDAR, radar, and a few other, uh, forms of measurement to be able to see which streets we have that are in need of being repaired. And it can actually see under the streets as well, to see if there's any, uh, washouts and other types of erosion under it, which, um, I know just a few weeks ago, there was a, uh, news story about someplace, I think it was down in the city, to where a school bus actually ended up having a, um, sinkhole happen while it was driving past. And nobody, I don't think, got seriously hurt, but this type of proactive measurement from the City of Bridgeton will make sure that kind of stuff doesn't happen around here. So, I think it's really cool that we did that, and it was neat being able to see it, so, thank you for inviting us up. When I was out on my walk recently, I saw that they are going through the West Haven subdivision, leveling out the sidewalks, and I know that's something that residents have been asking about for a while now. Talking to Mr. Gunn earlier, it sounds like it's a new company we're testing out right now. And I can tell you from what I was able to see, it comes out looking pretty nice. And, uh, if that's a more cost-effective way of getting a sidewalk back in shape, I'm personally all for it. And, uh, the last thing I wanted to do was bring up the Ward 1 meeting next week, and, um, remind people about that. So, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. What time is your meeting next week?
Seven o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hood?
Well, I, uh, was able to attend the event Saturday at the pool, and I thought it was very well done. And, uh, it looks like my cool counsel's got quite a bit, so I'm going to let her have it.
Let's see. Oh, Councilmember Norris?
I thought maybe the best for last, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I want to appreciate everyone coming out. I do love seeing our residents. I wish more would come. Um, I have been very active the last few weeks. I did sub ex officio for planning and zoning, and the police, I enjoyed representing our community. The Park Division was very busy. On June 4th, we attended a picnic in the park at Bridgeway. It was a great event, uh, good entertainment, delicious food. June 7th, a fishing derby was sponsored by the Kiwanis Club and the City of Bridgeton and Maryland Heights. in Maryland Heights. Over eighty children were, uh, we fished, uh, five had top winners. Um, we, uh, won, uh, in many attendance prizes. Uh, we do have a member that is involved with the Cardinals, so, uh, a lot of Cardinal memorabilia was given out. Uh, it was a wonderful event and I do appreciate that. And I'm gonna put in one plug to the Kiwanis. We are having another fundraiser July the eighteenth. It's our Kiwanis Club Charity Club, Charity, uh, Golf Tournament, beg your pardon, July the eighteenth. I just happen to have some, uh, applications if you'd like to come by. I just wanna do a plug for that organization. We gave out over seventeen thousand dollars' worth of, uh, scholarships to the Pattonville School District, so I'm very proud to be involved and you all were, and if you come to our pancake breakfast or any other support, you are supporting our community. Uh, also on June thirteenth, attended the Pattonville Fire Department, hosted a free lunch for seniors, over a hundred and ten signed up for this community outreach event. I think this is a great opportunity for the firemen who meet the citizens in a fun time and, uh, what their object is to see, uh, a friendly face in case a tragedy would happen, they would not be so afraid. So, I think that's a great opportunity. And on June the fourteenth, uh, I did a four, attend the outside pool party. It was very, the pool was so pretty and again, I can't believe I was at the other one and, uh, time flies when you're having a great time. Uh, I am on the Design and Review Committee. We approved a solar panel on Ermun, followed all the ordinances, uh, approved, uh, a new chain link fence on Lox. They all followed their ordinances. Uh, approved a house, a new addition, um, on Taylor. Um, they also followed the ordinance, provided the color, the architectural plans. This will be a first step and I'm happy to say that this was a young couple that's investing in our community. Also did view the van, uh, test our streets. I, I'm very impressed with that and I hope we can get the report from the last, uh, study so we can do a comparison. Uh, it is not like, it is better to have this. In the olden days, it was, uh, you got streets fixed in Ward One. I, it's my turn, so this is the more, what is necessary to be repaired. Um, and also, I just was concerned, I, I, how is everything going in, in the March fourteenth tornado area? You know, of course, with the St. Louis tornado, um, have, have we any problems, uh, with our, the insurance or the contractors? I just wanna make sure we keep, uh, top of our neighbors. Um, also, are we getting any reimbursement for any of the expenses? And, um, yes, I'm very happy to get the Fourth of July passes. Uh, I am getting some requests, so I do hope we get those tonight. And I do have a question if you could answer. Um, is anything going on with the John Calvin? You know, we're getting some activity down at that end with, uh, Circle K, so I just was wondering if there would, is anything going on? I know there's some rental in there, but there was supposed to be some bigger plans for that facility, so, um, you know what? I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Okay. Told you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, thank you, Ms. Norris, for filling in for me at the, uh, Police Commission Meeting as ex officio. Appreciate that. Um, also, thank you to the Police Department for keeping an eye on my house while I was, uh, out of town for over a week. Uh, in case you don't know, all the residents can go online and submit that request to have the Police Department come by and check your property while you're gone. It was pretty simple and straightforward to fill out that request. Uh, Mr. Bookout, thank you for collecting the shirt sizes and providing a sample shirt and thank you all of council for getting that information in in a timely manner. Um, let's see, the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee met yesterday and I'm really, um, I re, I really like what I'm seeing in their draft, uh, objectives and key result areas. So, I look forward to the third, um, open house coming up and then a final presentation of, of their document. Uh, let's see, reminder to council and, uh, I believe it's anybody who sits up here on this dais, that next Tuesday night, June twenty-fourth, is our craze training at six P.M. And then, um, Councilmember Hood held the Council Rule Subcommittee meeting tonight and thank you, Councilmember Westy, for stepping up as chair of that. There is a possibility that we will dissolve that Subcommittee after the final council rule recommended changes are presented to the full council and that'll be coming soon, so watch for that. And then finally, um, midterm budget meeting. Can we start getting a date for that? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luke. And, uh, by the way, Councilmember Norris, I haven't given my report yet.
You just charted.
All right, staff reports. Uh, this evening, we have, uh, in place of Chief Masadi, we have Captain Bryce Lovell.
We have nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Across the aisle to our, uh, City Engineer and Public Works Director, Robert Gunn.
All right, few answers for some of these questions. The tornado area rebuild or reconstruction, uh, we have gotten several permits that have been coming in every week. I know our inspector's been busy. I can have Bill come up with a tally so far of how many applications have been applied for, but I know they've been very busy, uh, with the repairs being made. As far as FEMA goes, uh, we did not qualify, and that'd be for St. Louis County, for any public assistance or reimbursements. Now, there is some individual assistance available, but there is no big citywide public assistance, but because St. Louis County just didn't qualify with the amount of damage that took place. So, we were not included in that Presidential Declaration a few months ago. And as far as the Old Circuit City Building, um, it is a banquet facility right now. Uh, we went through, looked at a few things a couple of weeks ago. Um, it's very nice on the inside. They did a great job with one of the, the big rooms they have available and I can provide some pictures of that, um, in an email if you want them. That's all I have.
I have a question. Um, does he have a liquor license at that banquet facility?
I'm not too sure. I'll have to defer to the city clerk.
Councilmember Luke has a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a follow-up question about the tornado permits. Are we still within that craze period where we're giving, uh, those affected the ability to pull a permit?
Until the end of June, July first.
Okay, July first. Okay, thank you.
Back across the aisle to Parks and Rec Director Brendan Kane.
Just wanted to mention that our summer day camp is in its second week this week, um, full of a hundred and fifty kids. Each week is sold out. Um, kids are having a great time swimming, playing games, going on field trips, so, um, that's a great program that, that we have every year. And then also, um, regarding Independence Day festivities, we'll be here before you know it. I did put a memo with some, uh, uh, attached information as well for all the council and the mayor, so if you take a look at that, if you have any questions, just let us know. And, um, if you do not want a golf cart, if you could let me know tonight, we wanna try to let, um, finalize our reservation by the end of the week. Uh, thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Kane? I see none. Mr. Bookout, City Administrator?
Yes, I think you all are aware that I had sent a letter to the postmaster, uh, because of our delay on the informational flyer that we had provided to the residents, uh, in the spring. I think there was about a month delay on that. And those, those did have first-class stamps, so I sent a letter to the postmaster to try to get some kind of explanation, but of course, you're probably not surprised, I have not heard anything from, from the postmaster, so, uh, I would encourage residents, if, if they're having problems, to write the postmaster and inundate him with, with, uh, letters explaining their situation and complaining and wanting an explanation. And, you know, maybe we may get through that way, but, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. Bookout? I see none. Uh, before I start my report, uh, it's good to see everybody tonight. Uh, we will be going into a closed session after my report. Um, you're welcome to stay. I don't know how long it's gonna take, but, um, we always come out and, and close the regular council meeting after the closed session. First of all, I attended, uh, the twentieth anniversary of the outdoor pool on Saturday. Also in attendance were councilmembers Norris, Luther, and Iowana. Additionally, Mr. Bookout and Chief Masadi were present. Retired Mayor Conrad Bowers and his wife attended, along with retired Parks and Rec Director Walt Semglus and retired Assistant Parks Director Joe Campbell. When I invited Mayor Bowers up to say a few words, he did let everybody know that, uh, you're never supposed to give a retired politician a microphone. Anyway, fun was had by all and, uh, thank you very much to, uh, Vicky Ventrella, who did an excellent job coordinating the event, along with Brendan and Katie Tucker. Thank you to the Pattonville Fire Protection District for providing the Bridgeton seniors a lunch of hot dogs, brats, and hamburgers with potato salad and slaw last Friday. It's a once-a-year event that they do and it's, uh, very well-appreciated. Tim Cunningham, once again, gave an outstanding performance last week at Gentry Park to begin our summer concert series. I wanna read a letter here that I received today. Uh, it's a, a note, not a full-page letter, from, um, Coach and Retired Teacher Bob Bimbin. He also is a, uh, former council member. Dear Mayor Heine, my name is Bob Bimbin and I've been a longtime resident of Bridgeton. I have hosted a family golf scramble at Berry Hill Golf Course for the last sixteen years and I wanted to acknowledge what a great job the staff did and made it a wonderful, from pro Doug Castellari and all of his staff down. The golf course was in great shape and the city should take it, take and be proud of it. Thank you so much, Bob Bimbin. Very good. Uh, that, that's good publicity for our city. I appreciate that. Um, the Bridgeton Brief was sent out electronically yesterday, so, uh, that's the first edition since, I believe, last June. Um, ideally, we would like to do that once a month. There might be a month gap here between this one and the next one because we need to get another edition of the banner out, which we do quarterly. Um, the banner is the one that is mailed to the residents directly to their mailbox. Um, if you don't know, uh, we do put out fireworks, uh, ordinance signs on, uh, stop signs and maybe speed limit signs throughout the city. We have already been getting complaints about fireworks and people said that they haven't seen these signs, so the city is gonna have an additional fifty, uh, yard signs printed up to put in key areas so that nobody can say they didn't know there is an ordinance against fireworks. And it will be, uh, pretty bold. It will state that there's, could be up to a thousand-dollar fine. So, uh, watch for those signs. Um, I think they're good. Uh, we have a lot of elder, elderly that live in Bridgeton and we have a lot of people with pets and fireworks don't mix with those two people usually after eight or nine o'clock at night, so. Uh, mid-year budget session, Councilmember Luke, you brought that up and I put some dates down that I think, uh, maybe we could take a look at. Uh, Thursday, the twenty-fourth of July, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, or Wednesday, the thirtieth. I'm not sure about Thursday. I think there might be court, but we can check into that. And speaking of court, the craze training next week will start in the multipurpose room because there is court that night, but we will finish in here after court is finished. Um, Bob, I think your, uh, roll call vote, uh, request was because that, um, Councilmember Patel was not, uh, at the last council meeting.
He was called.
And, okay, and, um, so that the, uh, city clerk was asking me why. So, she has to abstain. If, if you're not at a council meeting, you can't vote on the minutes, uh, you have to abstain, so, um, the Park Board appointees, thank you, council, for, for doing that and, uh, congratulations to, uh, Kathley Schlag, our Chairman of the, uh, Park Board, uh, for the new appointees. I believe we'll be up to eight members now and you're allowed up to nine, so, uh, that should be, uh, uh, quite a big, uh, difference for you. That's all I have, other than I hope that all of you got the three articles that I emailed out last week. One on the elected officials' economic development best practices, the second on handling disruptions at city meetings, and the third, what I wish I knew before I was elected. And one, uh, one quote I wanna, uh, point out that was in there and I, I think this is very strong, it came from Ronald Reagan. "There is no limit to the amount of good you can do if you don't care who gets the credit." Okay, with that, motion to move into our, um...
I make a motion to move into closed session.
Closed session?
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Norris?
She gotta read some. She gotta read some.
For the, I make a motion to move into closed session for the purpose to discuss matters relating to legal actions, litigation, or confidential or privileged communications with council pursuant to Section six one zero dot zero two one one of the RSMO.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwino?
Aye.